All right, we'll go ahead and call the April at Max Town Council Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all our visitors here tonight. We appreciate you coming out and we continue to get such good turnouts from our community. We act on your voice and your beliefs and try to make sure it's for the best of the community. At this time, we'll have a prayer from Reverend Duck followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We come in the sense of humility. We come also in faith. We thank you for all that you've given us, done for us, and provided for us, and the many blessings that you bestowed upon Appomattox and its citizens and in our lives. We ask tonight your guidance and your strength that all things accomplished here tonight will bring honor to your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
Again, I'd like to welcome everybody. I'm looking forward to us working through the rest of the year, just like we've done tonight on the budget and moving forward. We seem to have a lot of cooperation amongst the council tonight and from the community. We appreciate that. First, for a scheduled public appearance, we've got Sheriff Robert, Robbie Richardson. I knew too many Robbies. You're my favorite, though.
Wow.
I got one, too.
He's the only one.
Mayor, councilmen and women, thank y'all for having me. I'm not here to ask for anything tonight, so it's gonna be a good thing. I'm here just to give some of my quarterly stats, kind of tell y'all where we're at. For the, you know, first three months, we haven't got April done yet, but for the first three months, we, the deputies have had 97 summons wrote into the town of Appomattox, 88 misdemeanor warrants have been served, and 34 felony arrests have been made in the town of Appomattox. Just to kind of give an update on the dogs, Regilio was deployed seven times, resulting in a seizure of 18 grams of methamphetamine and 18 grams of cocaine. And K9 Connor was deployed 10 times, resulting in a seizure of 2.7 kilos of methamphetamine, a firearm from a convicted felon, and did a three-quarter mile track that led to a victim of a shooting that we found. Both dogs have also participated in four school searches. So they've been actively using, they're getting drugs off the street, they're finding people we need them to find, they're doing what you're supposed to be doing. They're doing a great job. So thank y'all for that. They've been an asset to the community and to the sheriff's office. Any questions?
It's a wonderful report.
Yeah. Hopefully more of them.
You guys are working hard.
Hopefully those numbers have to go down because there's nobody left to arrest.
I hope the numbers go down, but in a way that they're doing proactive work where there's nothing out there to get. So that's the goal. If we can ever get there, but that would be the maiden hour answer as well if we can do it. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Adoption of consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be approved or received by one motion in the form listed. Items will be removed from consent agenda for discussion under regular agenda upon motion of any council member and duly seconded. Items on there at this time, the March regular meeting, the special call meeting, and the March workshop meeting. Any discussion?
I have one amendment, and I wouldn't typically be pedantic about this, but it does have kind of a different meaning. On page eight, where it's the full sentence under action, "A motion was made by Mrs. Allen, seconded by Mr. Simpson, to adopt a resolution to rescind." It's currently listed as resend, R-E-S-E-N-D, and I just want to change it to resend. Slightly different.
Yes.
That's it.
Good.
Mr. Boyce?
Any other items?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
I'll second it.
Motion made properly seconded to accept the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The ayes have the motion carries. Next item, strategic planning factors order, master plan.
Yes, we only have one item that I have left, and that was, we had held up the release of the press release that was proposed at the last meeting, and it stays held until the next.
I'll make the motion to table the press release until we've met with the county. Any discussion?
Could I ask, since we have Sam here, and I guess answer first, should we even talk about this in an open meeting, but would you give your opinion on that press release? Should we add that to a closed session?
I'd have to decide if that even needs to be an open versus... The first question is whether it should be open or closed, and I'm not even sure, to be honest. I'd have to go back and look at it and see what it says. I mean, I know which press release it is. You know, I mean, we read it last time, and they got tabled, so, you know, it probably depends on what we talked about. It could be a closed session discussion. I don't know. Honestly, I'd have to think about just whether it would... You'd probably have to go on to get an agenda as an open or closed after consideration.
I think a strategy session with Mr. Vance could be useful for us. I mean, to discuss it in the same exclusion that we would use with the county in our joint closed session, we could use the same as contract negotiation for water renewal, if we talked about it in the scope of a contract renewal in 2031.
Right. It could be done that way.
I don't think it would hurt if we wanted to add.
Possible help with funding from the county for the things that we will need to do to be able to blend the water, et cetera, as in, well, that would be a good discussion there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, we just want to make sure the exemption covered that scope. If we could talk about that, too, or if we just have to keep it in terms of renewal, we'd have to define scope.
Correct.
All right. Terry, Sam, I'd lean on you guys and the mayor if this is appropriate, too, but I don't think it's any secret. I think I've spoken with most of you, but I did want to obtain a copy of the docket files. It's about 1,000 pages with the Campbell County lawsuit against Region 2000. I have some information, eight handouts printed, if you guys want to look at it, but just kind of gives background as to why. If there's any questions as to why, that might be useful to us. But it would cost about $500 to obtain a full copy of those records, and they'd be in digital format in the council. I certainly am not just going to hoard those. I don't want them just for me. It would be for all of us to peruse and just to get a feel for where that case is even at, and if there's any light at the end of the tunnel from a legal standpoint, because we haven't, I mean, I haven't looked at any of the files. We've just been hearing through the county or hearing through whoever about where that case is. So I'm just seeking consensus, I guess. I don't know if we need an action because it's within Terry's discretionary limit, but just to ask him to obtain those records.
The one thing I'd like to see, and I know that when the county's approached us on a lot of this, is they want to know where we stand. Well, we'd like to know where they stand. I do not know if, in fact, they have available all the documents that you seek. Probably not. I do not know. But I'd like to see them make a good faith effort at obtaining or providing us with the records they do have to show that if we're going to stand with them, they're going to stand with us.
I understand the sentiment, but if I were, if I, if a case that my father was in litigation for, that, you know, the result would impact me, I would still obtain the records myself. I wouldn't just ask for those files from him because it's a trust but verify. The county, sure, they may or may not give us the full records. We haven't exactly been the best friend to them. Regardless, even if they did come over here with a file box and said, "Here, here you go," I think it would still be prudent for us to obtain copies ourselves. And it's, I think at this point, we've probably spent more staff time since I made the request in late February and discussing it than what it would have been just to spend $500 to obtain.
I think I would say, let's see what the county will do first, and then if the county does not act, I'll support you to get them, to get everything. But I'd like to give the county the chance to, like the mayor said, show good faith, you know, because, I mean, realistically speaking, when the mayor calls over there and says, "We'd like to get this," and, you know, they could say, "No, you're not getting it." Then we have the wherewithal. We know where we're going to stand, and so then we can see it wouldn't be an outrageous ask, you know, $500 for them things.
Well, I mean, I've had that conversation. I've asked Ms. Adams, said, "Do you guys even have these records?" And she said, I don't remember, I think at one point she said they didn't have it. I don't know if they have it readily available. They certainly would be able to get it because they're party. But she also volunteered that we could sit down with her county attorney anytime we wanted to, to ask questions. So that's there. It's just, we have to communicate with the county. We haven't done that yet.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Give the mayor until the next meeting. If the county does not come, one way or the other, we'll have an answer by the next meeting. If the county does not come up with the documents, I myself will make the motion that we spend the money to get them. All I'm asking for is two weeks.
I understand where you're coming from.
And let me just, I'm just asking to clarify this in my mind. I'm not being confrontational or anything. I'm just asking a question. Are these documents not available at the Campbell County Courthouse for anyone who wants to come and ask to look at them? Are they not a matter of public record?
That's a great question. They are. So any one of us could take a day. I mean, it's 1,000, almost 1,100 pages. So any one of us could go up there, you know, drive up there, spend the time in the courthouse, look at them. But then we still can't print off a copy or share with the rest of council, and I think that this is a, you know, decades-long, multimillion-dollar issue. And if we're not willing to spend $500 to access them, I mean, I don't know, I certainly haven't studied our bills with, you know, from attorney's fees on this, but have we paid for any of those records so far that you might have accessed, or?
Not directly, no.
Okay. So, I mean, we don't have them available.
We haven't been ordered to go get them for you.
Right. So we don't have them already available that we paid for. I asked that question to Terry. You know, maybe in Sam's review of this case, he's obtained some of those on our behalf. I don't think that we've been billed for them, so we don't have access. It's just, it is a relatively small amount of money to save a significant amount of time, because if each of us wants to be informed about the issue, each of us would have to go to the courthouse and sit there and read, you know, a lot of the pages.
So far.
Sure, sure. And that's a great point. Maybe it continues. So we should definitely have reduction row, and we also have an upcoming meeting with the county. So I, for one, want to have time to digest 1,100 pages of, you know, docket files to see where they've been. And this aligns with Terry's goal. I forget which point exactly, but it's how can 10 people with four different law firms not reach an agreement in as many years? And maybe we can find the answer in this set of documents. And I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Boyce, about let the county reveal it. Still doesn't change my opinion that we should obtain them anyway, because we want to make sure they're from the source. It's a trust but verify. And it's a time thing, too. We don't know when our meeting's going to be, and we want to make sure we have time to review them.
Sam, if we were to acquire these records, would we be allowed to provide them to you for review? Not that you wouldn't want to review them all. I know I have insomnia some nights, so I'll probably get through about 1,100 pages. Shouldn't be a problem, but...
Certainly, we can review and give our analysis.
Yeah, that would be very appropriate, because any of us can look at them, and we all, we're limited in our knowledge of the water issues and the, but those are about the regional landfill issues, and I'd really rather have the, our legal advisor look at them and give us a response from your perspective legally. That would make more sense.
Would it be cheaper for us just to pay for you to get access to Campbell County's Ocre than it would be to pay for these records? I mean, they're probably about the same amount of money.
I don't know. I don't have the inspection figures. It's probably similar.
So Ocre would be a one-year subscription. That would allow us access to any other docket files, too. So that's, that's an option if you guys would be willing to do that.
So if there were other things that popped up there, you could look through them, only in Campbell County?
Yeah, each county, each circuit court has its own. And he would have to pull them. Sam would have to pull them for us.
Will we, we would be provided with those documents as council and as your client, per se? Okay.
I mean, if we, either way, whether, regardless of how they're obtained, yes, you certainly have access to the records.
My goal, getting the county to do it, is so we don't look like we're trying to go behind their back and get stuff.
I've already discussed it. I've asked Ms. Adams if she had them, and she said, you know, of course, they would have them, but I don't know if she has them really available. So I don't think it would come off as us going behind their back.
Okay.
It, to me, it's just what, you know, if we started this over again in 2020, I would think that we would follow the case pretty closely because of how much we have riding on it.
Yep. This is one of those things that was thrust upon me upon taking the oath of mayor of the town. We were hope, I personally hoped it would have been resolved by this time, but evidently not, obviously not. And we're halfway from then to now on when the end of the contract comes up.
And we're publicly making statements about it.
Yep, without full knowledge.
We're talking about having read the issue, and that's concerning to me. I've researched as much as I can from the outside, and I'd like to see it.
That issue is the regional landfill issue. It's not.
The water issue.
Water issue. Those are apples and oranges. Although, the water issue is damaged from the regional landfill.
It's apples and peaches at the same origin.
So we're not involved in the regional landfill.
It's apples and peaches at the same origin.
We're not involved in the regional landfill. And you want documents to go through the regional landfill litigation. I'm just thinking, yeah, give me a because. Help me understand.
Because we're talking about it. We're writing about it. We're, you know, our town manager is writing things, saying that people can't, people in law firms and issues can't be resolved with so many number of years. Well, maybe that's true. Obviously, it's, it's true to some degree because it hasn't been resolved, but I want to know why. What has been done to this point? Has there been arbitration? Was that binding arbitration or not? Has a judge made a decision?
How would that change the contract being canceled?
It changes our position.
How? You think they'll change their position?
It changes our negotiating. So we'll, we'll quickly realize, is there going to be a resolution or not in this lawsuit? Well, I think we'll be able to tell, because if it was left on a cliffhanger and just abandoned, which there hasn't been an update since July of 2023, so it very well could have just been lost cause, nothing else is going to happen. And so we can stop holding out hope for a court resolution. Maybe that's what it says, or maybe it says, hey, we're waiting on the results of some sort of arbitration. And we can either know, do we need to start negotiating now, or can we actually wait until 2030 and realize nothing's going to happen? It'll help us answer that question, and it will help us prepare a strategy.
In your opinion?
Sure.
You're just saying, we all have opinions.
Yep. Everything I say would be, you know, from my opinion.
Right.
I mean, does anyone have a compelling reason to not review them, other than the $500?
All right, let's entertain a motion to procure the full access for one year.
We, we don't know what the price, I mean, I would make that motion, but that might be up to $1,000.
It could be. I don't know.
And what is that called?
They've asked me about that. We do not currently have Ocre, which is electric access to Campbell County records.
Oh, okay.
We would have to obtain that. I'm not sure how much it costs.
Spelled? O-C-R-A.
Okay.
Yep.
As you, you sound like a country boy here. When you say Ocre, I'm ready to fry it up.
Fried or boiled.
So I can make that motion if it's for, if we want to procure Ocre. The thing about that, I would assume you would have to charge us at least for paralegal hours to pull the records. So there would be additional costs there, but it would be a subscription that we'd have access to. But if we just pay for 50 cents a page for the current filings and pleadings, that's a more clear budget picture. That would be under $600.
I could certainly find out how much it would be and get it back to you. I can't get it in a second, but I can get it back to Terry to get it back to you.
But, I mean, the records request would still be, if you're billing us hourly for 1,000 pages, I mean, that could...
Somebody's going to go do it.
Right. So that would be over $1,000 bucks, I would imagine.
So you would, that's correct.
So I'll make the motion to just pull the 1,057 pages or whatever of the current case file, not to exceed $600.
And that'd be in the digital format?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it would be fully shared for the council. And the goal, obviously 1,000 pages are not all going to be interesting, but there might be one page that tells us what we need to see, and that makes it worth it.
I think it puts us in a better light when we get to the negotiation table on the water contract, knowing.
If we get it the way we're talking, we can share with Sam.
Yes.
And we can, and we can find out what your thoughts are and where we might go from there.
Correct.
Because we do have a lot riding on it.
Yeah.
You certainly do.
Get a second then, and make this motion.
And what is his motion?
Up to $600 to acquire the documents.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion made properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Ayes have the motion carries. Mr. McGee, please carry that forward.
Bring my motion on forward.
Do we have another motion?
Well, I have one to table the press release.
Oh, that, that, I thought we, I thought we'd already acted on table motion.
Is this, y'all won't need to, what do you, what's your pleasure?
So Ms. Younger, the circuit court clerk of Allen, she is familiar with requests. That's how I got the quote, is I asked her, I'd asked how many pages it was. So her legal clerk, Michael something, is aware they can take credit card payment, or we can send them, I guess, a check. But they have it, they started, I think, pulling the records when I even asked, and I told them, whoa, 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 I don't, this has to go to council.
We had a motion made by Timmy that was seconded by Nathan to table the release, the press release.
The press release.
Until, what, didn't you say until we had, until we met with the county? So put that on there, too.
I mean, another, another vote doesn't hurt, but didn't we say no at the last meeting?
What, to table it? We said no.
We just said no.
Yeah. We'll table it to the next meeting. We don't have to vote on it at this time. It'll come back up as new business, unfinished business. All right.
Okay.
Does anyone besides me have new business to come before the meeting? Pardon, is there any other unfinished business to come before the meeting at this time? New business. I hopefully communicated to everyone by page, we need several dates on the last weekend of May, first week of June, and third week of June to send to the county to have a meeting, this joint meeting we were planning. Does anybody have, I hope y'all looked over your calendars. Regrettably, I didn't, but I can look real quick. Yes, ma'am, I made a request.
You think in like half a day, couple hours?
A weekday, weekend, what do we think?
Probably a weekday. I avoided whenever meeting was.
A day, like eight hours a day, take off a work day?
Uh, I know nobody wants to take the 27th off. That's Memorial Day. We're all off. Not a good day. I think we'll forget the last week of May, June the 6th. Anybody got a problem with June the 6th?
As long as you have two weeks to fully confirm that. My typical off day is Wednesday, but I can shift my days with proper notification.
I'm good with June the 5th. Is everybody good with June the 5th?
That's right.
Wednesday. Well, I have got a festival park committee meeting, board meeting, the first Wednesday of every month.
What time?
12 o'clock, rail yard, noon, 12 o'clock noon. That's standing time.
Okay.
So...
I mean, could you, could you leave and come back, or is that, you gotta be there the whole time? I mean, you'd want to, I know that, but I don't know how long those meetings last.
I mean, what time are you thinking? Lunchtime thing, or, because that would conflict with my...
How long do your meetings usually last?
An hour.
I'd like to see us start maybe at 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon.
Let's just propose then the 12th.
Start the meeting at 3:00?
Yeah, or 7:00. I don't care.
Okay, no, I don't care either. I was just asking.
Well, how long a meeting then we're talking about?
Well, it depends on, so if we're doing...
We've got the agenda we've provided that, I hope everybody's read by now. It's probably going to probably cover two hours, two to three hours, depending on discussion.
Should be about three hours.
Yeah, because if you did it, I mean, I'm just trying to think of it. I don't care. I can, I'm flexible. I'll make it work.
Like June 12th at like 4:00, or like say something specific, so, so we'll know. You're saying June 12th, Dad, not June 5th, June 12th.
Let's do June 12th, starting at 3:00.
Sounds like a plan.
You would throw that date out to them. You going to give them one date or two dates?
Ring date, June 19th, starting at 3:00.
Do you want to give them like two different times, too, or no? Is that too, too many options?
That's too many options.
All right, so we need to keep the 12th and the 19th available.
June 19th.
Isn't it, is Juneteenth?
June 19th is a holiday.
Juneteenth.
Yeah. Maybe the 12th and the 20th then, or something?
Juneteenth.
Or, I mean, we could also propose May 29th, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Because we have two meetings we're trying to get.
Yeah, I think May 29th would be viable for me.
What would be the issue with May 22nd?
Um, nothing really. Nothing really.
So, I think on the 15th and the 22nd.
The 22nd, we're wrapped with the budget, so that takes a lot of pressure off staff. The 22nd, the 29th, and the 12th. 3:00 each day.
Which two now?
May 22nd.
Or June 12th?
May 29th. Or June the 12th. All meetings start at 3:00.
Is this gonna be?
It's one meeting.
We're not gonna eat a, eat a meal?
We can do that at, at the end. We can do it at the end. And keep people talking, moving along, getting the business done, so we can eat.
I like the way you think.
I like the incentive.
So, you're gonna kick those dates out to them, they're gonna, then you're gonna email us?
Let them come back to us as quickly as possible.
May 22nd, 29th, and June 12th, okay?
So, nothing set in Sam?
Right, nothing.
At 3:00 PM.
Send them, can we make a motion to send them this letter by the end of the week?
Yep.
Okay.
Probably have it.
So. So, Mr. McGee can send that by?
Well, just the board meet, the board supervisors.
The Monday after our meeting.
Oh, the Monday after, okay. So, we get, as long as, let's go ahead, we'll get it out this week.
Yeah.
So that they can receive it before Friday.
So, Mr. McGee, will you be able, will you please send it out?
Would, would you rather do it, or should we?
I like to just take it, take it over with seven cop, well, six copies, one for the county administrator, five, one for each board supervisor member, please.
I don't care.
Christie, she could get that prep for.
If you'd rather do it now, that's fine.
A letter, you can use mine, throw it out the window.
No, it's good.
But the agenda is what we voted on.
The agenda's good, letters, a good, a great starting point, we're just putting down, knocking down the details as much as we can, all right.
He sends letters.
Government agencies.
All righty.
I said, I can either bring this up during council comments, or it's kind of new business.
Go ahead.
So, I've been making a whole bunch of records requests lately, just out of an attempt to better understand where we've come from. We're talking about things that are long, ongoing contracts, like the water line. I certainly wasn't talking about, or writing about, or reading about water lines when I was nine years old, but I'm trying to catch back up, I guess. So, as part of that, you know, individual records requests, I can imagine, can disrupt an office in trying to respond to them, if someone's constantly pelting the clerk, or whoever, for information. So, I figured it might be a good idea if there's already readily available, Christie, and this is not an attempt to make more work, this is an attempt to simplify. So, if we already have these records digitized and ready to roll, we should create a document repository for council where we can just look at the records that we're trying to research, as opposed to asking Christie or Terry for them. So, it includes minutes, agendas, budgets, looking back, I think, all the way back to 2005 is already digitized, so that would be very easy to copy and paste.
Pass one.
Thank you.
And then same for zoning maps, conference of plans, and then some of our contracts, so, you'd be able to pull the water contract if you wanted to. And then just active information for our boards and commissions, who's on it, who's the chairman, when did they meet? Those types of things that aren't necessarily on the website, but are still public records, that would just be compiled as the council uses. It could be a work in progress, I'm not asking for all of this to be done all at once.
Mr. McGee, does this line up with the way we're indexing the documents now in any way?
You know, we, as far as the way we, we can protect it, the only thing I ask is that the council, you know, whatever you agree to, agree to it as a whole, and we'll make it happen, we'll protect it as it needs it.
I've been putting Terry in a tough spot lately, where I'm asking him for records, and asking Christie for records, and he doesn't know if, if, he should consider a FOIA request, or a request from council. So, I, I think these are the documents that any of us would have access to if we came here physically and asked staff to do it. But this just takes the burden off of, off of them.
And how do you propose? We access this?
Just a shared, they could give us a password-protected folder link, to where it has a password that we all have, or it could be sent to our town council emails. And we'd be able to access it without bothering them to send us the agenda from five years ago.
The agenda from five years ago would be pertinent, help me understand why.
Well, I mean, there are times where we're voting on issues, or trying to figure out why something is the way it is, and I know, I feel that way a lot, you know, what's the voting history on this? When did this, you know, get passed, or what's the budget history on this particular budget line? So, I think, you know, looking back, at least to 2005, where it's already readily available, that's, that's definitely interesting and valuable to me.
So, would this be updated, like, this will be done, and then it would be updated forever?
It'd be a bigger lift to create it, because you're moving stuff over, but then, once it's already there, you know, adding four or five documents a month isn't a huge lift.
All right, and then another question, are these things that people are having to utilize often, or dig up, or, does that, I mean, would it be useful? For other than just us? I mean, for their regular work, or?
Well, one of the things I think of, I'm just throwing out information, don't attack me. One of the things I think about is, if something was voted on 20 years ago, that was then, and this is now, and we can change, I mean, things change, there's never an ordinance that can't be amended. So, I mean, what, I'm trying to understand why going through all this would be important to any of us sitting here to do research, like, eight, 15 years back, or whatever.
Well, Ms. Biggle, earlier in the meeting, you asked me, what have we historically given to the museum? I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head, I know that at some point, we provided funding for a water line, but that's the type of thing.
But that was, that was.
It was an incentive, right?
Economic incentive.
And so, I could look back at the EDA minutes and say, oh, that was an economic incentive. So, there are, I mean, we have one case, or probably half a dozen, if we look back through this meeting, let's look back at how we did it, or, let's not do it the way we did it.
But we could look back when it came up, instead of having voluminous, I'm sure Ms. Allen would sit there and go back 25 years and look at, read all, I'm, I'm just saying, what?
I think we should, and it saves staff from, from having to pull the records for us, and we do this work upfront, where Christie had indicated to me, a lot of them are already in a folder on our shared drive back to 2005, so it would be just copying, literally, it would take five minutes, maybe less, to copy those files to a cloud folder that we'd all have access to, and then that way, if we ever did need an agenda, or minutes, or budget, we could just pull it ourselves, instead of emailing Christie, or emailing town manager.
How much time do you think it would take for staff to get it put together in the first place?
I mean, a first version would just be copying and pasting the minutes, agendas, and budgets, and that might take somebody an hour, or a couple hours.
That part wouldn't take very long?
Yeah, so, and maybe that's a start, and then we just work at, see if it's used, see if it's not used, then we can add work to it.
I was gonna say, why don't you take one section, and go for it, and see how long it takes, and how much use it gets?
Monitor how much uses it gets.
And then go from there, and this, but this would take a while to put together, cause they've got lots of other things to do too.
Cause our staff is really.
They're shorthanded in.
Yes, very.
So. But I could see where, where the historical look would come, come in handy. And it might kinda help understand why things worked out the way they did, or why they didn't work out the way they did.
Yep.
Look, we can bite this elephant just a little bit at the time, so that we don't overpower what we've already.
Yep.
What we've got.
How far along are we in our transition of documents from paper to electronic? Is it back to the 2005 date?
We haven't moved much since we got rid of about 500 boxes of paper.
Okay.
But, I mean, we're, we're ready to start making that transition, but we haven't funded anything.
Okay.
You know, I didn't expect the town clerk to leave.
Understood. Nor did we.
Terry, for your sake, would you like this in a motion that we've asked you?
Yeah, I mean, if y'all just say, yeah, y'all go ahead and do it, I'm fine with that, you don't have to be, you know, real formal, just say, yeah, y'all go do it, and we'll get it done.
Back in census.
Do you need a kind of timeframe to get to where we, he thinks we ought to be? I mean, I don't wanna.
When you start building, you know, Christie said, you know, a lot of that stuff is pretty easy to get to, it wouldn't take long to build that stuff out, you know, in a day or so, we could have at least the initial look at it.
I would say go ahead, as long as it's not interfering with what.
Normal day-to-day operations.
It's gotta be done, damn.
I mean, ultimately, we, we wanna end up at a near paperless operation, and, you know, what you're gonna run into with this is that you don't have any tools, you could put it out there electronically, but you're still gonna have to search those things, for the most part, document by document. You know, where you wanna end up with is that, that the data is electronic, and you can use a single tool to look at everything. Cause, you know, you, you can think about, you know, 20 years' worth of documents, that's a whole lot of documents. You know, you do 24 a year, just in here, and so, you've got a whole, you know, that's just a whole bunch, and that's just one, you know, that's just council meetings and workshops, so.
That's the reason, I guess that's what, the point I was trying to make, how much would that be used, how relevant would be for all of council, not just, Nathan wants it, but, I, I, I'm just wondering.
Once we get it there, how useful will it be to the staff?
Well, whenever y'all ask us stuff.
Yes, I understand that.
It's hard to answer all.
I guess what would be, what would be some negatives of doing it, the time, the energy?
Time is the biggest problem.
They already have access to this. They have access to these files on a shared truck.
They do.
We just, we have to pull it and give it to, to you when you want it.
Yes. So.
You could, you could use it, you know, initially as like a little baby step, you know, like, okay, let's, let's get the agendas over, and, you know, let folks take a look at that, and then, you know, you could move over minutes.
Cause you may can find what you're looking for.
Right.
By bruising the, the agendas.
Right. Cause right now, I'm taking all of mine home and putting them in my home office, and that's how they're organized, because I, I don't wanna throw them away, and I need to save them, and I have looked through, back through some of them, cause I write things down on them.
If you look at, you know, I mean, the website is gonna have the agenda packages for a certain number of years back. You know, I mean, you could look at just adding, adding it to that source, and that makes it available, you know, they're public documents, you know, that makes it available to a wider group of people. You know, cause the public has access to that data.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, it kinda depends on where y'all would like to get it, I mean, I think of it as, you know, stepwise, you wanna provide it initially to you, I mean, the public could always, you know, FOIA the information, but they would not have direct access to that information.
And I'd say, you know, once we get that file directory built, and I think that we should build an internal version, because eventually, I wanna add, you know, our contracts, and, and if we get written legal advice for something that would be covered under a FOIA exemption, but council still might need to see it, you know, that's where that might live. But we could also, I think it'd be a good idea for us to post those truly public, you know, very public records, the agendas and minutes that we have to permanently maintain, we should be posting those to the website, and that's what, you know, staff is doing now, we just haven't done the historical posting.
So, it's gonna lock this stuff as far as FOIA, if people FOIA the, that's personnel records and stuff like that, none of that can be on the line. I mean, that's gonna be, you do what was, putting it in the file.
The stuff that we would put there was just public records.
Okay.
Ken, did you wanna tell Nathan something about the budget?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the current system that we have in our, excuse me, we, we call it legacy system, came into existence in 13, so, I can't say if I can even get into the system prior of budgets, prior to 13.
Okay.
Now, they may have to be manually scanned in, because it's an old DOS system, I wouldn't even know how to get in it.
Okay.
So, that's what I'm going, so.
Yeah.
From 5 to 13, we may have to go downstairs and get like a box.
And maybe that's something we do as needed, like, that's not something we, there's no point, I don't think.
But I know as a 13 forward, I can do it from my desk, that's what I'm going.
And there's probably some of that information in, we'd at least see top dollar figures in public hearing announcements and things.
Yes, but, but here's the thing too, each budget year, you have a three-year window on that budget, so, the 13 would take you back to probably 10 or 11.
Okay.
But, the Library of Congress, Library of Congress, Library of the June, requires you to keep them indefinitely anyway.
Okay.
So, we have them boxed, and the audit is boxed, those are two documents that never leave, that never leave.
So, Terry, could we, I guess by consensus, ask for the, for a private council, like password-protected repository for agendas, minutes, and budgets? Put the budgets back to 20, whatever's readily accessible.
So, we have some old dogs down in boxes.
Yeah, we have permanent boxes down.
Old dog.
They have this clay powder.
Uh, me.
Does our staff, do you guys have the Microsoft subscription that allows OneDrive? I know council does not.
Yeah, we do.
We, we do, we, the only time it runs, that we run into issues is when somebody else has something big.
Okay.
For us to get to, but yes, the answers.
Okay, whether, we could just have read-only access to a password-protected OneDrive folder, probably all we need.
Not, not really knowing if this would go under a new business, or if it would just come under, I don't know, uh, town manager's report, or whatever, but on his report here, there was a thing about people parking on the sidewalks. And I think we need to come up with a code that would prohibit that. Because there's nothing in the code that says you can't park on the sidewalk, it just says you can't park there to work on the vehicle.
So, that's happening too.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
That's happening with that vehicle.
But, I think we need to, 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 to codify that, and, and set a, set a fine for it, so that there could be an enforcement arm, because the last thing I wanna do is spend $1.2 million on sidewalk, and have somebody park an 8,000-ton vehicle on it nightly, and, I mean, you're, you're, you're already having trouble with ADA compliance, but when they take up two and a half feet of sidewalk with their truck.
Excellent fine.
So, that's, again, I don't know if that would come under new business, or whatever, but we need to get it done.
It's in my report first.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We're done with the documents, can we?
So, we're, we're clear with that, everybody's good with it?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And see how it works.
Any other new business? Council standing reports, finance.
We've already about covered everything we could do tonight on budgets.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Timmy. ARPA? Anything from ARPA? Do you see if they have a comment they would like to provide to us at this time? Ms. Richardson?
Uh, I apologize. I, um, missed it. I talked to Terry about this earlier and then you hit me when I sit down and I forgot to talk about, um, just to bring up your point about the truck parked on the sidewalk. We went over every state code, county code, town code that we could find. There's nothing that's really covering that right now. I got a couple of guys that worked at LPD and, and referenced what Lynchburg had, and I spoke with Mr. McGee about it. Uh, I highly recommend it. It's basically impeding the flow of traffic, whether it be sidewalks, roads, anything like that, and that would cover this issue. Um, so I can, I can get a copy of that code section if you'd like and, and pass it to him, or however y'all would like, but I think it's definitely good code that we should have.
Appreciate that, sir.
And you would just need to come up with a fine.
And there's just some definitions that's gotta go in there to, you know, basically what a vehicle is or what a, what a sidewalk is, just.
What it impeded, yes. All right.
And as well as it's, I would recommend, cause like in this situation, I would recommend putting it in there. I'm sure council would have to look at it, but the owner of the vehicle is who would be liable for it. It's like a parking ticket, something like that. It's presumptive that the owner of the vehicle is the one that put it there.
And this is coming from Lynchburg City?
Well, this is a, yeah, it's a code that they have and it'll be, and I would, I'd recommend tweaking it to your own, how you like it, but it'll just give you a reference to go, go by.
Yes.
What do you, what would you think would, the fine would be appropriate, based on what you know?
I mean, I would think you could give a first offense and a second offense. You can light on the first offense and second offense. After that, you can, you know, it's priced the same as a parking ticket. You know, I think fifty dollars is what a parking ticket is right now.
Okay.
And then if it gets to the point where they park on it and destroy it, obviously that's, you get destruction of property at that point. So, we, we do have something right now we could do if we could prove that. Any other questions for? I apologize for that.
No, no, thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you for that.
If you know nothing else, you know this council wants as much relevant information as we can obtain.
And we should write the, the, that first offense warning and second offense fifty dollars and fine and with the, uh, ordinance that we pay us, in my opinion. So, because, you know, then we, we are arguing with people. Who says, where says, you know, why are you giving it to them?
Yeah, it'd be black and white.
Yeah.
All right. Any other citizen comment?
On this or like public?
Anything.
So, public comments?
Yes, sir. Please take, take, say, and you got three minutes. Sorry. And just to be fair, as soon as you finish your name, I'll start the timer.
All right, Brian Baines, six oh six Lee Grant Avenue. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanna talk about the widening of Lee Grant Avenue. I'm only gonna talk about two aspects, if I can even get through those. Uh, there's a lot of things I wanna talk about, but I'm gonna talk about communication and then the sidewalk in front of six oh six. Uh, there's nine families in single-family homes on the portion that is affected, about half of them have kids. Uh, I didn't know about this until I asked a staff member how it works going. They were, we're doing that Lee Grant thing. And, uh, and I said, well, that involves taking my land. And they said, well, just a little bit. And, uh, so I requested the plans and I got the plans. And a little bit turned out to be eight feet, which puts my front porch pretty close to the road and makes me uneasy with children and hopefully soon grandchildren, uh, playing in. This is where we're retiring. We're not moving. So, I want that house to be safe for my kids and pleasant for me. The nine families don't know this. Some of them know this is in the air. None of them know how much land you're talking about. I'm pretty sure. And, uh, they're not, you know, the folks across the house from here are worse off than I am. I mean, the plans show six to seven feet of their yard. That's gonna put that road about seven feet from the wall of their house. You know, I would talk to them about it, but you might want to. I'm asking you to hit pause on this project. Stop the application process until you go stand with these folks, look them in the eye, stake out what you're gonna take, so that they understand for sure what you're dealing with. These are your fellow citizens. This isn't Henrico or Auburn Marl, Fairfax or Chesterfield. You can't do this on the downland. You've got to talk to these folks. I've known three of you for twenty years. And I know via Max Turn, that's, that's only like five years for some of you, but I don't have my grandfather buried in the graveyard here. But, but twenty years is a long time, and I know the rest of you, except for you, Mr. Boyce. I'd like to meet you sometime. Who doesn't like a good tugboat story, anyway? You could've called and said, hey, Brian, I got a vote on this thing in your property. Can I meet you and Debbie in your yard and show you what this looks like before I vote on this? That didn't happen. Only one of you mentioned it to me. All these families deserve that meeting before you apply. Right, that's it. Okay. I wanna talk about the sidewalks, but.
Go ahead. I'll give you another two minutes.
That'd be great.
Cause sidewalks are much concerned about the, uh, Lee Grant as it is all over the town, but please, two minutes.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Please, sir.
Uh, the sidewalk in front of my house, six oh six Lee Grant, is in very bad disrepair and it's very dangerous. It's crumbling. Uh, there are some spots where there's a three-inch difference between two pieces of concrete. All of it almost is level with the road, and that's really dangerous. If someone's wearing, you know, earphones, just walk along. If it's dark, if they're elderly, if they're a kid, they could easily wander into the road and get hit. It's amazing it hasn't happened. This would be tragic. Somebody could get killed or crippled. It is also a serious liability for the town. You guys have fiduciary responsibility. You take your law firm over and look at that sidewalk and say, what do you think about this as a liability issue? They're gonna tell you. You, you ought to direct staff to just close it off, but then they'd be people who would walk in the street. It's very dangerous. You should order staff to fix the sidewalk immediately. You don't need a ten million dollar grant to fix that sidewalk. You should've fixed it years ago. And what it's beginning to look like is you're not fixing the sidewalk, so you can use it as a piece of evidence to get this grant. This grant is not for the sidewalk. You can fix the sidewalk to the dimensions it is. You can raise it six or eight inches above the road, so it's separate from the road. I might give you an inch or two if you need it. I might move my hedge back a couple inches or something, but you've gotta do, and it's negligent to leave that sidewalk where it is. If you got this grant tomorrow, construction would be what, five years at best? More like eight years probably before the first shovel foot of gravel was dug. Even if you get this grant tomorrow, you can't leave that sidewalk like that. You've gotta fix the sidewalk anyway while you're waiting for the grant.
Thank you, sir. Well, I know part of the reason that the sidewalk gets so tore up, cause I do drive a school bus and I do try to stay off of the sidewalk, but there are other vehicles that go through there that don't. And I, we've gotta find that balance. I understand that.
I was trying not to mention the school buses on the sidewalk, cause it's not the driver's fault.
No. We gotta find the balance. We gotta find that balance. It's, it's impossible. We have school buses actually meet through that stretch of road, unfortunately. You've probably seen it then.
I'm not saying there's not a problem. Taking the property of nine families isn't the answer. Not in a conservative town like this. Property rights are a serious business here. This is not a light matter. You should've talked to every single one of them, all of them.
I'd like to make a motion to get staff to look into repairing the sidewalk if it takes to re, pour the whole thing to do it.
Second.
Yeah.
That sounds like a great use of our ARPA money.
And wherever, like Mr. Baines said, the room when it comes up, I agree with.
It's, it's, it's an extreme safety issue.
Yeah.
Of our public, and that's a ma, a big part of what the town government's all about. And you know that, cause you've served on this council.
Oh, if we're gonna look at this, how high the liquid oil, like going into your school buses, we will not be able to get up on eighty and slip. So.
High enough that we don't have to put a rail?
Well, what I'm saying is, if you go eight inches, that school bus ain't gonna be a jump sidewalk. It's gonna cut into the rims of it. And if you do do it, then sidewalks will tear it all to pieces in the first year, cause the concrete grew.
We'll bring back some options to us as well.
And, well, let's talk about it.
You cannot keep too large a big truck scoring it road right there and laying hand sidewalk. So.
Bring us back some options.
We've talked about a lot of those. And putting it one way was one of them, and that would fix it. But I don't know.
We'd be fine with that.
Would you?
I can only speak for my family. Yeah, I have never talked about that with anybody else.
I, I thought that was a good.
It wouldn't matter to us one bit. I'm sure.
Good compromise there.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
So, I've. Kind of.
Okay.
So, I've got an idea, and I have talked to Jeff about it.
Oh, gosh.
No, you know.
I got an. No, 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 definitely not. It's a long-term project, but I think we're in the position to consider long-term projects. It's what we're here for. That road, you know, Lee Grant is a, what VDOT calls an evolved road. You know, it started out, people just walked. That's where people's houses were, and that's, you know, why it's so narrow. Because you have houses that were built a hundred and ten years ago on either side, and it hasn't allowed for, you know, trucks and things that got a lot bigger since nineteen hundred. So, what we might wanna start looking at is that, you know, the northern part of the town has the four sixty bypass. Well, the southern part of the town has started getting a lot more traffic with increased residential development on Puffin Station Road with seven twenty-seven. I think we need to look at an engineered road that connects the southern part of the town, um, to four sixty. So, basically you'd connect either Thomasville or Taco Bell, that traffic light. You'd connect to the elementary school at Ferguson or some other route, and you go across railroad track there and then come back. There's some land that you could bound and bound the edge of Mr. Cole's farm and come out to Evergreen Avenue. These are the types of projects that cost tens of millions of dollars and take decades, but VDOT likes funding projects like that a lot better than they like funding road improvements and historic. It's a long-term, big-picture project, but it'd be cool to at least get it drawn, I think, and it wouldn't cost that much. But anyway, just something to mention.
Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
I'll tell you this. I only know this, cause I was on plan commission years ago. There was a design for a road. There was a plan for a road. I think I came out plan commission oh five, and the school was built, what, two thousand?
Which school? Oh, elementary.
The new elementary.
Pardon me, the, the, the high school opened in nineteen seventy-four?
Well, that, the one on Lee Grant.
Yes, two thousand.
I think it was part of that. I saw some old notes somewhere at a planning committee. There was talk of a road because of the school that cut through seven twenty-seven somewhere. Came out on Lee Grant, but I'm not sure. Maybe it came out of person. But somebody did some work on this, you know, twenty-five years ago. If you find it somehow, it's gas job.
And you think maybe the county, uh, might've done that?
I, I would have been the county. I would think maybe.
Because you were on county planning commission, you know?
Yeah, and I don't remember anything about it, other than it was because of the school, and it was to direct, to get a cut through to seven twenty-seven from around the school of Ferguson somewhere. I don't know how much work is done on it. You now know everything I know about it.
How would the long-term thing handle the immediate term?
So, it, we would fix, well, that's, that's one rip, but there's, I think you can go across down at the high school and go across creek, but, um, we would fix the sidewalk. We may have to do some, you know, traffic plan changes with the school. It's painful, but it might, we might have to do something about school buses passing and dump trucks and commercial traffic passing. And let's say it's a ten-year project to get a road built that's an engineered road that we can have traffic to, and that preserves our historic district and keeps that residential and removes a lot of, you know, the tractor trailers that come around seven twenty-seven all day long.
You should know. You live right there.
It takes the pressure off that intersection too, cause you're coming down right at Evergreen Avenue and coming across by Mr. Cole's farm.
Again, my question is, how does that fix the immediate problem with two-way traffic on that street?
Right, so it's, we're gonna have to make changes, I think. We fix the sidewalk, we're gonna maybe make traffic flow changes, uh, prevent commercial traffic or schedule school buses. There might be solutions there, but the long-term thing is gonna have an engineered road to reduce pressure on Lee Grant.
Mr. Aldrin? One engineering study.
Let's ask the county for half of that.
Let's ask the county for all of it.
Sure, why not?
Good for you.
We'll leave it all in the county, if that's okay with them. We don't have to have it run through town at all.
I think there's a planning commission meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Current motion on the floor is to have the staff look into the corrections to sidewalk issues on Lee Grant Avenue. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Yeah, let's have the motion carries. I think appropriate timeframe would be about two months, if that's okay. Is that too, too little to, for the staff to get back to us? Anybody? Anybody?
Soon as possible.
Soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Baines, for springing that out.
So, I don't mean to force this question without us thinking about it, but I guess it is prudent. Are we going to continue with the smart school application? Cause if we're gonna put it. Has it already been submitted? We're going round and round again. But if it's already been submitted, then, okay, then no more staff time's gonna go into it. It's, unless we get to the next stop.
After a lot of hard work.
Yeah, well, let's just keep it then.
Keep it going and we'll see what comes of that. Because that may have included turning it into normal street.
I'm just, I'm just to ask a question. It seemed stupid, but I'd wanna ask it. Say we fix the sidewalk and people hit it, and people are tearing up their vehicles, and whatever else could happen. Is that, is that like the driver's fault? I'm not being dumb. Of course it's the driver's fault, but I mean, that could happen, right? If, if the sidewalk is fixed?
But the only way we look at it, the only way you can keep the sidewalk intact, you're gonna have to stop all, all the street vehicles from driving them. And that's been, if y'all can, the ones that y'all been on here long enough, can, should remember this argument, cause we've talked about it many years. The only way you're gonna stop tearing that sidewalk, make a road safe, is either widen it, turn it one way, or stop all the heavy traffic. And I've showed y'all reports that we've been able to get through that. So, the question is, which route are y'all gonna like to take? And staff says, it's completely up to y'all.
To actually enforce it, we can just make a welcome to automatic sign that's nine feet tall to prevent commercial traffic on both ends. I mean, you could. No one's gonna listen to us.
I mean, you could. No one's gonna listen to a sign, and we're not gonna be able to actively police and enforce it. I mean, he's got other things he needs to put down.
Oh, they would have to, they would have to pay attention to a one-way sign.
Yes.
It would be, it would be in the same flow as Main Street. That's what I'm visualizing. It would just go that way?
I just, we're not gonna stop traffic coming through, and you want to weigh it, you have a lot of head-on collisions, which is gonna happen.
Head-on collisions, eh.
And it's gonna happen. Until people get used to it, I'd put a lot of knowledge in newspapers, things like that, that this thing's changing. Because you got young kids, and they speed down that road faster than any other roads in town. And I mean, we, I get more complaints on Lee Grant in that area right there, speeders than anywhere, and we try and enforce it. You can't get them all. Takes one to miss the turn or miss the sign, and another truck's coming the other way and it's hit on. I mean, it's almost hit on every time you get on the road now, is it is?
Wow.
Much less somebody thinks it's one way, it's gonna be in the middle of the road, so... I mean, y'all in a tough situation regardless, and I understand as a landlord, and I would be the same way you are. The signs, all you have is big trucks stopped, and then we're gonna be able to direct the traffic and try to get them to back up because they're gonna be scared they're gonna hit the sign, so...
The only thing you can stop the buses, that's the only thing you guarantee is solved.
This has been one of the biggest dilemmas that we have discussed with you.
It absolutely is.
It doesn't seem to be a good...
We've discussed this for 40 years.
A good choice to fix this.
And we will fix it, even if y'all give us what y'all would like to do.
Whatever decision we finally make, there's gonna be some who are against it, some are for it.
If y'all wanna enforce this, I'd be happy to put people there in the beginning weeks on it as much as we can, but you're gonna understand, well, we have to stop the vehicle, which is a real good spot to pull the vehicle over on that road. So then you're in another situation with a long...
Somebody's gonna rear-end you. Yeah.
That would lead us anywhere you go to it.
Eh, it's not an easy solution to do that. So we would've done it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't walk on that road anymore.
I mean, that would've been my other thought. If you just take the sidewalk off, they can still walk.
They still walk, they'd be near railway. I had a, I had a crazy idea, and I was, it was crazy just to get the conversation. At that time, stop, but evidently it's a bigger issue than that. Shutting down is not an option. I understand that, but we'll need to, we belong. We're not gonna solve it tonight. I appreciate your comments, sir, and we'll make every effort to correct the issues that are present and future as best we can. Here's where the cooperation from the other locality we're a part of will take place. All right. Town manager's report. Mr. McGee, I hope we haven't stolen all your thunder, or if we have, we can move on.
Yeah, sure.
Please, sir.
Just one item. Once we have the ordinance from Linsford, I would like the council's approval taken to our legal office to update that and review that so that you would have something that you could get onto quick.
Entertaining motion?
I'll make the first.
At effect, early. Second? Motion made, property seconded to obtain information from Linsford passing on a legal council so that we can take actions as quickly as possible. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? The ayes have the motion carries.
Okay. Jones Avenue Residence, non-protected views, continualized in the blue, the property restored to its prior community of legal interest.
Church Street, Waterline, we began receiving a few complaints from residences in one business. And we're gonna get dust as a result of construction, but we have talked with Telly Construction. They are going to check about some possible sealing moves that they could make because, you know, they, they obviously want to try and run as long a stretch as they can because that's cost-efficient for them, but that does leave a long stretch open for a long period of time. So they're gonna look at some kind of options for sealing that so that the dust is minimized. In the meantime, we have to work with residents who are, you know, their cars are very dusty, and they have one business that is actually impacting their equipment. And, you know, those are reasonable things, but, you know, it will cost us to do the sealing on that. And once I'm coming to construction, then if we're gonna get in the quote tomorrow, I will get that to y'all to find out, you know, how quickly, if y'all are interested in doing that.
See how much you save.
You know, the other option would be not to address the issue, and, you know, that's certainly your call.
I think we gotta do, I'm gonna give it, take account of that.
Yeah, I mean, because you can wet it, but, you know, as soon as it's dry, we'll be right back.
And some people are driving slower. Some people are like driving in between it, you know, they're, they're... But you got people flying down through it, and, you know, the dust is flying.
I mean, the rain wets it, but when it does, then you got chuckles that you fall into.
Horrible chuckles.
Chuckles.
Yeah.
Horrible. And, and that's what I've been dancing around with. If somebody's coming near them, hey, you can't.
Right.
Or like Robbie said, we're gonna have head-on. We're trying to avoid the big potholes. It's awful, but it'll get, we'll get to the end of it.
They are, but still making pretty good time. We got a couple of little things running into this little town, but right now, we're averaging about 140 feet a day. The Out-North Country Music Festival proposal has been postponed. Looks like we're planning on moving at the Saturday, the 14th, 2025. That will, I think that will, that will help everybody out, and they'll have a better chance of figuring out what they, you know, how, how much, the number of people that they want to get. Because between VDOT's requirements and emergency planning requirements, they just weren't ready to make that happen. Town staffing, the wastewater plant position had been offered, and somebody had accepted, but the employer countered the town's officer offer, and the position is now being reopened, isn't it? The human resources manager had 34 applications. I've got that down to a short list of four folks, and I'm planning on opening interviews next week. The town clerk position, I'm planning on advertising tomorrow. And I can give you some more details on that as of in a closed session.
Thank you, Terry.
What's the piece of the whole strategic threat and planning?
That's just, it's just information. You know, I want folks to recognize that little towns are targets, and that you take that anything to bring. Everybody has to keep their eyes open. And, you know, like I say, you just have to, everybody needs to be keeping their eyes open and opinion and attention because we don't live in the kind of world we grew up.
Yeah, absolutely right.
So, it, it's always been that way, but it's getting, seems that it's getting worse.
All right. Thank you, Terry. At this time, we will be moving into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1, for the purpose of assignment, appointment, promotion, and performance of resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically being employee A.
I saw that yawn. You're gonna make me yawn now. They're catchy. Definitely catchy.
At this time, I'll entertain the following motion. Move the council convene in a closed session for the purpose of what was stated here. Any discussion? I need a motion.
So move.
Motion made, property seconded by roll call vote. Ms. Allen? Mr. Boyce? Mr. Garrett? Ms. Puckett? Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
Our vote is six to none. We'll now go into closed session.
To the best of each member's knowledge, the only subjects just discussed or considered in the preceding closed meeting were those lawfully exempted from the FOIA Act's open meeting requirements and properly identified in the motion that convened the closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712D.
Do you hear the motion?
So move.
Oh. A, sorry. 2.2-3712A. Okay, who made the second? I'm sorry.
I don't, nobody did yet.
Oh, okay.
Somebody will.
Second.
Motion made, property seconded. Any discussion? By roll call, then. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Garrett?
You can take this.
Puckett?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
Our six to none. Six to none. Motion carries. Counsel comment. Ms. Allen?
I have nothing.
Mr. Simpson?
We had a lot of them, so that's good. Just wanted to see where we were at on the property maintenance code, and if we could, would it be possible to have that by the next, or by the May workshop meeting?
We would.
Amazing.
Yay! That'll make Mr. Boyce happy.
I'm sorry. Wrong turn.
But that's been sent to us, to Rob, for review, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
We, have we ever had a resolution to adopt a certain edition of Robert's rules? Did we, have we, because I wasn't at the organizational meeting this year, the first meeting in January. We did not.
Don't.
Okay, so I think it'd be a good idea for us at the next regular meeting just to adopt the current version of Robert's rules of order. Most boards do that. I think the county adopts that every year during their organizational meeting. But the current edition is the 12th edition, so we'd just like that on the agenda.
Was that the edition everyone was given?
I do not know. I don't know, I don't remember getting a copy. I have a copy, but I don't think the town gave it to me.
I don't think we've adopted that since I've been on, since we've been on campus.
A copy, but I don't know what edition it was when we talked about, you know, the session was about the allowing, the funding, the welcome center at the museum. And afterwards, we were all given a copy, but I don't know what edition it was.
Kim's going to look.
Okay.
Oh, good.
All right. Thank you, Nate.
I just had two more, three more, sorry, just questions. The security cameras at the train depot? Have we looked into the security cameras?
Tori has been talking about it with a couple of folks, but I don't know exactly where it is right now.
Okay.
So, so what?
Second edition.
Second edition.
We just wanna see if we've ever adopted a version. Because our town, our charter just says Robert's rules, but it doesn't specify a version, and they have minor differences. So the security cameras, I think, if we could just put that on a work stream list and figure that out sooner rather than later. The updated video camera for Mr. Duck, has that been ordered?
It has, yes.
Okay. And then the Brownfield study is my last thing.
They're gonna be making a presentation, I think it's June is the next, that they will make several. They'll have several renderings to show.
And you're gonna have it here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's all that?
Mr. Garrett?
None.
Ms. Spiegel?
None.
Mr. Boyce?
None.
Ms. Puckett?
Yeah.
With no further discussion?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made, property seconded for adjournment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.